The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of August 28, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go. Councilmember Arius. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Corr.
Councilmember Gonzalez is here.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Mayor Gonzalez.
Thank you. And in keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I'll call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received no speaker cards for items not on agenda.
Thank you. And then, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we've received three speaker cards.
Thank you. And for the record, Councilmember Freeman entered at 3:31. Would you please call the first public speaker?
Michael, turn-up seat.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Welcome. Thank you very much. I kind of expected to be like last two weeks ago we could speak afterwards because we weren't given the information in the presentation in advance, so.
That's really going to be the case. So if you don't want to speak right now, you don't have to. We will wait until.
Thank you very much.
We have the reports. And if there is there anybody else, Madam Clerk, who needs to speak at this point?
They're all for item 3A.
Okay, so we'll just wait until we hear the presentations. Would you please read the next item, please?
Reports, item 3A, improvements to the development review process.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a series of team members who are going to help with this presentation today, but I get to kick us off. So the first thing that I will say is that this is an update. We don't have an action item that's in front of council on this. We have lots of work to do still in this area, but we want to report back to the council that we've been working diligently over the last six-plus months on several pieces of this initiative and wanted to just provide that update to council today. As you see on the screen, of course, this is a very high council priority, in fact, for the listening public. A year ago, we sat in workshop with the city council and identified priorities of the city council, and I will acknowledge that we have a fairly aggressive work plan that has more than 40 different priority initiatives. But we narrowed down even amongst those initiatives, the top 10, and the number-one priority of your council at that workshop was creating greater ease of the development process. So this topic today is your number-one priority that was identified. We have created a number of different areas because it's not just one or two things that we think we can do to be better. So we created a number of different areas where we're going to streamline processes, offer and create new tools and technologies and resources to help with this, look at best practices in other areas, but also really listen to the community. So we've created a stakeholder advisory group of developers that are from our Bakersfield community, and we've brought them together with us several times to just a couple of first times was just to listen about their thoughts and ideas around the development process, but then also bring them back and share with them some of the ideas that we had had, and we're going to continue, and we thank them for their time and effort because it's, you know, it's a volunteer effort on their part, but continue to come back and share with them, you know, we heard you suggest this, we think this gets at that, but we still want to hear, does it really? And continue to have that feedback loop with our stakeholder advisory group from the development community. Also, as I noted at the beginning, we're going to have several individuals from our team come up and talk about this because it's not just a singular department. You know, this covers multiple departments, the development process itself, just going through the permitting process. It covers multiple departments, but then also there's work that departments do that are in support of trying to make sure we have good projects happening, good things coming forward. And I just wanted to reflect, you know, for a couple of minutes on, you know, what is the overarching goal here in the ease of the development process and being a developer-friendly community. We have, you know, publicly made the statement in our strategic plan and council goals that we want to be the most business-friendly city in California. We did acknowledge the California piece there because we know sometimes there are some regulatory challenges that we deal with here as a member of the state of California that aren't totally within our control, but here in this context, we want to be the best. That means that things are predictable. It means that things are consistent. It means that we've, again, we've tried to make it easy and streamlined. There are some obligations that we have as the public entity to make sure that life and safety codes are upheld and that, you know, we're also being thoughtful and strategic about land use development patterns. But outside of that, it means that we're finding solutions and finding ways to get to yes, not ways to get to no. And again, the two things that we've heard most from our developer stakeholders are that, you know, that we needed to be predictable and we needed to be consistent and timely. And so, again, it's even not to say that, of course, you know, we're looking hard at how do we make it cheaper, but even it's not always just about the fees. Folks are willing to contribute what is fair if they know that they can get it done timely and predictably. And so we're working towards that end, and so we'll walk through several different pieces today for how we've been moving down that path. But of course, recognize, as I mentioned, that there's much more to do, but we're making progress. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Howland, who has been helping coordinate the efforts amongst departments to work on these different facets of this initiative.
Good afternoon. Gary Howland, Assistant City Manager. Excited to share this topic. We've, as City Manager Clegg's mentioned, we poured a lot into this over the last, not only six months, but goes back a few months prior to that. So this is, being a high priority, it involves a lot of departments. So I want to go through kind of our, the meat of our presentation today and then introduce those that will come up and share because it won't just be one of us who takes the lion's share of this. So I'll just quickly go through our agenda topics. We'll first talk about that developer and internal feedback. We've done two surveys at this point, both in 2022 and 2023, so we'll share a few of those results. They were both qualitative and quantitative, so it gave meaningful feedback. We have a red team. This is not our white glove team, which we've talked about before, but this is a cross-departmental team that is in the system, in the permitting system, in the development review system, that's giving us feedback on what's working, what do we need to tweak, and that's been meaningful. We've, we realize this is phase one, and it's a continual process. We need to get better, and so we'll talk about some of the progress we've made during this phase-one phase and then in future. We'll then have our brand-new Development Services Director, Mr. Phil Burns, come up and talk about the online permitting, where that's at, and how that's going to improve in a short time. And then he'll also share the set timeframes that we've landed on, on some of our planning processes, specifically the site plan review. After, Mr. Burns will have Jenny Byers come up and talk about our business success team. This is the white glove team that helps those looking to develop here, those that are here and want to expand. How do they do that? And what's the best way to help them? How that ties to many efforts that we're already working on from an economic development strategy. We're going to hear from a couple of our developers that I've invited to share some of their feedback. One that's actually in the process right now of developing a project, so you'll hear a couple messages there. And I've also invited our developers that we've had some of these feedback sessions with to come up and share some of the feedback so you can hear that process. We're, we want to hold the mirror up. We want to have folks tell us, how are we doing? How can we get better? And that's part of the process. We'll get a little bit into the next phase, what we want to come back to this council with of new improvements after this phase-one, and then we'll have a closeout of how this relates to the mission and goals of your council. So I'll first touch on our survey. This is a little bit of a complicated chart, but I'll try to go through it briefly. We, as I said, we've done two surveys. One was in 2022, and then our last survey conducted was in November of 2023. The reason I share that exact date is because that was the date that our online permitting system was down. It just so happened to be, we had the survey out for three weeks, and the system went down after week one, the survey was out. So timing is everything. So the survey results in 2023 do not share a very good story, but again, we want to hold the mirror up and and see, you know, how we look and how we can get better. A couple of just quantitative data that I want to share, and we're asking, you know, basic questions, you know, how easy is our process? And we ranked it from five would be, the score of five would be the highest. You're doing really well, or the score of one would be you're not doing so well. And then what you have there is the average for both the developer responses, and then we also wanted to ask our internal staff that work in this process, you know, give us a self-assessment. So we have our developer column, our staff column, and then a blended column. A couple of those questions down at the end of this, of this section we're showing are, you know, would you pay for or feel that a pre-application meeting would be valuable? We got some good feedback from developers. However, they didn't want to pay for it, so there was that feedback. So we're still looking at that as a future phase. I think the qualitative, I summarized there, they can see that we have a desire to improve, and they like that. They want to see that we're being innovative, we're looking for ways that we can improve. And so some of those comments, you'll see that, you know, it's a friendly environment. When we compare ourselves to those that are down south on environmental review, many of those environmental reviews take a long time, and sometimes it's an entire EIR is required on many projects, but we have found ways to do that better and faster. So you're seeing that in some of those, some of those comments there. Just a few more questions on the survey. I won't dwell too much on this, but I think the main point on the qualitative data, you will see that we have an opportunity to improve because the survey, the timing of the survey in November of 2023, that's a baseline. It is a low bar, but I think there's opportunities to improve. I again summarized some of those qualitative comments of where were we seeing these comments frequent, frequently, and upgrading the online permitting system was obviously highest on our developers' list because the system was down. So we know that's an area that we can improve. We also heard that communication between our Public Works Department and our Development Services Department, and maybe some of these other interdepartmental communications, was not where it needs to be, and so that was also a high priority as number two. They mentioned that staff could be trained, and that could help, so we realized that's another area. And then more just on customer service and clearer guidelines, which is things that the red team actually identified as well. So the feedback from our developers, the feedback from our internal group align. So that tells us that these are the areas that we can, we can focus on. We had two different sessions with everyone in the city that touches the development review process. And these two sessions, so I've talked about the two surveys, these sessions were hosted by Nick Kittle. We hired Nick Kittle to come in and look at our processes, talk to our teams, train us on things that we can do to specifically target these steps in the process. And he did some great sessions where he taught our teams, he gave them tools, taught our teams how to do process mapping, which is a really interesting concept where you look at each step in the process, you identify what's a decision point, and does that need to be made, and is that important? And our teams are already using that. We're seeing some successes, and Director Burns will talk about that in our site plan review. He had another session where we talked specifically about site plan review because we heard some feedback of there's, that's an area where we can focus on, and that process resulted in a set timeframe, which Mr. Burns will talk about. And everybody in that room, all 65 of us that work on the development review process, all came out of there with an agreement of here's where we need to go. So that was, that was a pivotal moment and good improvements as part of this process. I've talked a little bit about the red team, but I want to identify them because they have been valuable to me. I meet with them on a regular basis, and we talk about what are areas that we need to focus on. I've had Ernie Medina from City Fire, I've had Adrian Castro, Susanna Cormendi, Tony Hakes, Jason Humphries, Martine Ledesma, Kevin Trulson, and Chris Hines. All of those individuals touch the development process somewhere, and they've been valuable of giving feedback, not only to each other and talking to each other, but to the rest of their teams that they work with of, you know, here's what we're talking about, here's where we need to get better. And most of it is communication, informing each other, and being more a part of the process. But that team can definitely continue to move in the right direction. We can see some good teams coming, good things coming out of that team. The last thing I want to mention is we did have some sessions with our developers, and it wasn't just developers. We also had engineers at the table, architects, those that submit these plans and go through this process. And we, in fact, we had some follow-up with Blaine Neptune because he gave us four pages of information on areas to improve, which I love. You know, if he's, if he's in the middle of this, I want to hear from, from our architecture engineers on how do we get better. We had a session with Dave Domahowski and the Home Builders Association on, you know, how can we improve? And I talked through some of these continuous improvements, and we'll continue to go back to them and seek that, that input and that advice because we only get better as they are our customer, and they can help us get better. So this will be a continuous improvement process. So with that, I will turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. It's my opportunity to talk to you guys a little bit about our system upgrades, and I kind of want to step back before I move to our new system and talk about some of the other items that have happened over the last six months. Our project act system is our plan review system. And about March of last year, we had a pretty major upgrade, and that was some of the downtime was related to that upgrade, which also provided additional transparencies, which I'll get to in a little while. But these upgrades are intended for the customer experience, right, our applicants. Make things easier to use, make them transparent. That way, it's clear where a project is in the process, what needs to be done, and if there's a delay on both city side or the applicant side, it's there, it's clear. This, what we're, this shown right now is our clarity system, and this is actually on the city side. It's a dashboard that each individual person, city employee, can create their own specific dashboards. They're able to set it up so that they could track the type of projects that they review. Again, trying to ease a process, if they know they have 10 projects, it's going to show them the 10 projects that they need to take care of. Along with that, we start getting into the customer side. This is a new permitting system, not a new plan review system. So it's that interface that will allow the applicants to create an account, to be able to submit the various type of applications, to process their plan reviews in one location, to do their inspections, pay the bills, get their job card, and I'm going to walk through that, to go over the process. So as an applicant, once you set up your profile, you're going to have your home, you're going to have what's my permits. So you're not going to see everyone's permits, but if you have a business account and you're a subset of that business account, I'm going to have access to all of my permits for that business. So if I am a home builder, and maybe I'm the person that submits the plans, but I'm not the person that does the inspections, along as I'm part of that business, now I have access to that permit and all those records. Same thing with the application. So again, trying to provide those intuitiveness and make it more user-friendly. Once a permit is applied for, again, moving towards the transparency, you'll see that blue box, that application. That's a ribbon that's going to be found in all of our new permitting system that shows an applicant where you are. So at this point, in this particular one, it's only an application that's been submitted. It hasn't been accepted for review. So there's other tabs there, the review, the issuance, it's under inspection, certificate of occupancy. Again, it's showing the end user where we are in the process. Below that, you're going to see some different items, details, inspections, tasks. I'm going to get to that in a second. Intuitiveness. Our current system, it's based on an old mainframe system. It's very, it's kind of clunky. This is more of your, hey, Google Maps, I'm going to start typing an address, it's going to start finding those valid addresses. It's that type of intuitiveness that this cloud-based system is going to bring to our permitting system, just to make it easier. I talked about that our plan review system is still saying. What this, this integrates completely with the plan review system so that an applicant doesn't have to log into one system to submit my plans, another system to check the status, and a third system to pay. It's now one, one location. Talking about a little more of the transparency, that is something that our developers have asked, where's my project? This is a current plan review routing slip, and it provides a detailed record of where our project was, who reviewed it, who's the coordinator, does the applicant have it, does the city have it? This is out there for every single project. So there is no question, if someone wants to know a status for a project, this is available online to both the applicants and the applicants. Kind of touching more up on our, the new system a little bit is my permits. Current system, you have to, you have to go record your own numbers yourself and know where your permits are. This, when you log in as your business account, you're going to have exactly your list of what you have applied for and their statuses. Again, providing that added transparency to our applicants. Same thing with inspections. It's going to have those inspections. So for instance, if I am a superintendent, and, you know, I'm not at the job site, I can pull up my inspections and see actually what those results were that day, and further, we're moving electronic on the corrections. So now I can go to my corrections. I can then get ahold of my, you know, maybe inspection supervisor and go, hey, I disagree with this. Now my inspection supervisor also has access to that. So this is going to provide a quicker way of communicating between our field staff and office staff. The approved records, right now, our approved records are over in one system. You have to come down, sign for a job card, you get your receipts. You have to, those are multiple locations. This now consolidates those records into one files location. So if I had to permit an approved plan here, I would have my approved plan set. I would actually have my job card. I would have my signed permit. If I have a home builder and I get my certificate of occupancy, this is where it's going to show up. So everything is going to be in one spot for that project. Again, providing that ease of use and transparency. Our new system right now is almost done with its migration efforts. Staff is doing testing, as we say. I sent out an email before this meeting for our training schedules. We have eight planned training sessions. Those training sessions will also be placed on the city website. We have about 170 or so developers that do business with the city. All of those developers have been sent the email training for those eight sessions so that they're able to either do a virtual session or an in-person session. Again, we don't just want to roll out a new system. We want to make sure that we have supported that system and our development community is able to process permits. Mr. Howland talked about our process mapping, and when we start looking at our various development processes, and this, this is, yes, it's small. I understand you guys can't read the text, and it was done on purpose, but this, this is what staff went through to look at a site plan review, to look at all the different places and where a decision was made, and assess, do we need to keep that decision point? Do we need to modify that decision point? How is this impacting both staff and the developer? Or is it something that's a legal requirement? So all those items were assessed, and again, this is just one example of one type of permit that staff trying to go through and address. And this is a little blow up and just showing you kind of an example of what one of the decisions would mean in that process. So there's a lot of work that's been done on the staff side to really look at our process and try to ease it. Part of the process, too, is how do we convey this information to the public? Staff developed a two-page brochure. This is part of that brochure, just to kind of make it easier to kind of convey what was discussed at one of our staff meetings with the 60-plus people. It's that department review, that second one from the left. That section in that meeting was agreed upon that we, within 15 working days, business working days, if a project was sent to that site plan review committee, all comments would be completed. And that was so that our overall process, we could get it done 30, 35 days, trying to get it closer to that 30 days. So if you turned in something for site plan review, you have those comments. Planning staff cannot process their piece without getting all the comments back from the individual departments. So we have some departments that were five days, others maybe it worked 25 days. So it is to provide uniformity, and that's really important because it provides certainty to the developers, and that's really what they're looking for is this, that certainty. I kind of alluded to already that site plan review checklist, and that's something else we're trying to work for. As we're working through these different processes, to also create that additional layer of brochures or pamphlets that we can put on our website to provide more clarity on the process. So it's not just a new system, but it's, what can we do better overall? And that's kind of what the city staff's trying to do as far as easing our process. And just to touch upon real quick, before I hand it off to Mr. Clegg, we've seen a five to seven days overall per application average on the site plan review, as far as reducing the amount of timeframes. We're still trying to trim that further, but that's kind of where we are today. And we know that on that pre-screen side, we're looking at some of those days and able to, based on some new reporting, maybe get those from five days down to maybe two days. So I think we're going to continue to trim off times to make things quicker and better for developer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burns. We, I just wanted to highlight for council again that we have seen already a significant reduction in the amount of time to get through site plan review because we dug in, looked hard at the process, found some ways to cut some steps out, found some ways to streamline. We also believe, again, that the technology tools, which, you know, We also believe again that the technology tools, which, you know, we had initially one piece about a year ago, and then we've had the second piece coming in now that's going to enhance that user interface significantly. And those technology tools are also going to help us along with this process review. But this is just for site plan review. We use this as our first pilot example. We've made a guarantee of that 15 days here, and that's the standard. That's for any typical, I mean, that's across the board. All site plan reviews, we're looking at that timeframe, and many will be faster than that. This is just the first. So we're going to also continue to go through each of our permit types or review types, and we're going to develop guaranteed timeframes for all of them. This was just the first one. And so we've actually already been, we're not ready to unveil some of those, but we've already started some of the conversation about what are, what do we think are reasonable starting points for some of those timeframes? I'll admit that, you know, there's a mix of opinions, and there's some of us are saying, no, I think we're going to get it a little bit shorter than that. And we're, you know, pushing hard, but we're going to have guaranteed timeframes for all of those permit types across the board. The second piece that I will suggest also is we've had some feedback from our development advisory group that there may be some either high-volume types of activities or high-profile types of reviews where we want to even create a distinct timeline tier that we're exploring where there are some, you know, communities that say if you, you know, if you pay a premium and you use a pre-approved review, or excuse me, pre-approved list of firms that, you know, are very familiar with our processes, we could even offer a different tier with a different timeframe. But again, under a certain set of conditions, we're even looking at that as well as the, you know, for certain instances where a premium is needed or warranted, it would be available with even a different set of timelines. We want to continue to work hard, to work across the board and get improvements for all of our review processes, but then we're going to go to that next level as well and look at, can we even have a faster tier for some of those projects that are, again, coming at a premium? With that, we'll turn it over to Ms. Byers to walk through a couple other pieces.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. As City Council knows, the Economic Development Department was established in 2020. We previously were a part of Development Services, and so moving out from there and making it a department, we went through the process and did an Economic Development Strategic Plan. It includes 17 strategies and 77 actionable items to make these 17 items. But what I wanted to talk about today was two of these, and two of them, the number one is to focus on business retention, expansion, and attraction efforts around our industry clusters. And so as we talk about streamlining, these are one of the ways that we get our businesses to expand. This is a way that we get our businesses to attract new development here, is by having this streamlined process, as well as having a strategy to elevate the city's reputation for business development friendliness. We know that that is one of council's top priorities for us, but it is included as well in our strategic plan. There are actionable items for business friendliness. We have four action steps, three of which we're talking about today. And those include establishing a formal business success team composed of high-level representatives of key city departments focused on expediting approval of major development projects. And that's really this process that we've been going through for the past year, having directors involved, having the red team involved, trying to find ways that we can streamline and not pass off from one department to another. We also have established ongoing forum with development community. We haven't developed this as a formal process yet, but as Mr. Howland explained, we have done the survey for the two years, so we are starting our engagement with the development community. We've met with the Home Builders Association, and so trying to establish those relationships and having an ongoing forum that the development community feels that they can reach out to us, that they have access instead of being shut out from the process. And I think that's one thing that they've struggled with a little bit in the past before, is how do we get to this point that we get our building permit approved? We're stuck in the system and we don't know how to get out. And so we're working on those relationships so they know who to contact in this process. And then the last thing is to launch a formal development concierge program at City Hall. We've kind of been calling this the white glove treatment. This is where, again, we have those relationships with developers. They feel like they can reach out to us and not be dinged or have their project setback because they have opposed something that we've done. We've heard that before from some of our developers that, can this be an anonymous survey? Just because they haven't wanted to put their name out there is one that's going to complain about a city process because they have applications in. And so as we look at this white glove treatment or development concierge, that's really some of the goals of the programs. So our business success team, when we talk about true economic development and the city's role in economic growth, we have a lot of incentives, we have a lot of programs that we work with, but when it comes down to it, what can the city truly control when it comes to economic growth? What do we have absolute control over? Because that's also one of the complaints about submitting a building permit. They can't go to anyone else. It's not like they can get different quotes or anything. They are stuck in our process. And so what is it that the city can do in order to control and provide economic growth? The first one's going to be infrastructure, and that's our essential services. Police, fire, water, sewer, those are all classic city functions. And when we look at things like sewer, we have the project that's going through southeast Bakersfield for a sewer line. It hasn't been able to develop, unfortunately, it's in Ward One and Eric is not here tonight, but that project, just the sewer line, is really providing the backbone of future growth in that community. And so that's where we're going to see really a new community pop up just because a sewer line is being run through the area. But the biggest topic for me, for economic growth, that the city can control are the regulatory items, things like the building permit process. Every developer I've ever asked, what do you think I can do to assist? The answer is always, get me through the building process quickly. Time is money. If you tell me three weeks, mean it, because I'll have a contractor on standby waiting to go. And if we are behind, that contractor will move on to another project. And so I'll frequently get calls, help me get through this because my contractor is leaving come Monday. And so that's one of the things as a city that we can control directly is our regulatory issues, permitting, zoning, those type of things that we're working really hard to do and provide for council and provide for the community. When we talk about recruitment of businesses, we get asked, sell me on your city. What do you have? And that's one of the quality of life things that we talk about. It's also number 11 of our strategy is to launch a citywide quality of place initiative, and so we're going to be working on that. But the work that we're doing is creating that narrative about what makes us special. I know what makes us special. I on purpose came back home to live in the city of Bakersfield because I wanted to be a part of this community, and I wanted to be a part of its quality of life. We have 20, 30 miles of Class 1 bike lanes. We have activities, restaurants, shopping. For the ninth largest city in California, we have some amazing things, and that becomes part of our narrative for quality of life, quality of place. And then the last thing that we can do for the city to provide this economic growth is our work that we do with our local business community. We have incentives, EOA, entrepreneurship, workforce development, but it's also where we built this ecosystem around the needs for small businesses. We've done that with our partnerships, with our financial institutions, with our educational opportunities, but also our role in the regulatory process. So with that, I've talked about the relationships that we've created and the strategies to elevate the city's reputation. We have a couple of guest presenters. First, I'm going to ask up Jeff Ettrum with Bolt House Properties, and then after that, we're going to have Troy Hancock with California Dairies, just to present what their experience has been with the city of Bakersfield. So, no, you're on the other side. Hi, it's nice to meet you. There you go.
Thanks so much.
Welcome.
Okay.
I know, you're a little bit taller.
Yes, sorry. Okay, I'll be very brief. I've only brought up Blaine Neptune and Freddie Porter's eight pages of notes and comments to share. So Jeff Ettrum, Vice President of Development at Bolt House Properties. We're a family company. We've been here in Bakersfield for a very long time and have development opportunities for 30, 40 years out here within the city of Bakersfield, so we certainly have a vested interest in this. We appreciate very much having a seat at the table. I think I speak for the development community, HBA. The staff, Gary, Christian, Phil, has been very engaging in trying to get us to the table and ask what the needs are. We are the ninth largest city. That means growth, that means implementing the system. The system, I love holding up a mirror today. It's appropriate that we're having this today since the system's down right now to send the survey back out and we'll see where it goes. But no, the system is, the upgrades are needed, the upgrades are appropriate, and it's really working out those kinks. And we appreciate the opportunity to be able to share where we're at. I think the transparency is fantastic, and that starts with the communication back and forth with the development community. What sells Bakersfield? I've been here for 12 years now, moved up from Orange County, so in terms of developers, it's a paradise compared to down south. But what sells Bakersfield, as mentioned, is the timeframes and the certainties. And we've had that historically, and that's what we look to continue to have when we're selling to home builders within our Seven Oaks neighborhood. When we're selling or leasing one of our retail places, time is money, and being able to explain to them exactly what the time to market is going to be is extremely important, and that's what we're continuing to strive to help the city and shed some light on that. I think that one of the things that the interdepartmental communications is something that I think is very, very important to continue to progress with. There's been talks in some of our workshops about a one-stop shop and bringing in public works and engineering from key members from the subdivision side over under Development Services and Phil, and I think that would be tremendously positive. I know we're supportive of that because sometimes through the site plan review process or plan review process, it is, it's nice to be able to go to one location, have those conversations when you come up against something. I think we're incredibly supportive of that effort, should that be something that you guys try to implement. And then being a large city, I think at the end of the day, being able to, if you hit a roadblock in the system, still call Development Services Director, Planning Director Paul Johnson, and be able to set a meeting, whether it's pre-development, we're supportive of the pre-development, I'd pay a modest fee for that. I think I said that in the survey. I think being able to anticipate problems and sit down with staff, that's something that Bakersfield's done for years. And even though we're going to the entire electronic system, I think we want to encourage and make sure that that is not lost because we're a big, small town at the end of the day, and being able to have a face-to-face conversation with someone is extremely important during the development process to be able to work through those issues. So appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk and, yeah, I'll turn it back over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ettrum. Thank you for the Bolt House investment in our community. We see so much growth and really appreciate it. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Troy Hancock with California Dairies. Let me slip over to this. So just to give you some background, California Dairies is owned by a group of dairy farmers with the majority located in the Central Valley and a number of those located in Kern County. So as part of their desire to continue to produce more milk, they were looking for opportunities to build a milk plant in Kern County. And with that, I was tasked with identifying a location within Kern County that would support this business model. So just to give you a little bit of background, we are actually in the process of building this plant over on Gosford and McCutcheon. So this plant is a milk bottling plant that will produce ESL and aseptic milk. To give you a little more background on what that means, ESL stands for extended shelf life, aseptic stands for shelf stable. So this will be the most technologically advanced milk bottling plant in the world. So first phase is approximately 200,000 square feet. We're making an initial investment of roughly $210 million. We're going to be bringing on staff of approximately 115 people. We have plans and based on what we're seeing with customer demand, to grow this facility out in three phases. Third phase will be an investment of roughly, total investment of roughly $650 million, and we'll hire a staff of approximately 400 people. So with this being the most technologically advanced fluid milk bottling plant in the world, we are in need of hiring that level of educated team members, staff. And we've actually found Bakersfield to be a great community where we can attract and hire that level of people that we need. So we feel very fortunate. So just to give you some background on how this came about, I'm going to share you a little bit more with you. So these are the renderings of what we're doing. This is actually the current state of the site. This is a recent photo. So with this being the case, we are full speed moving forward to bring this site into production in December of this year. So to give you a timeline as to what's happened, we initially reached out to the city of Bakersfield Economic Development Group, and I look at Jason back there because Jason was a key partner in this. Not only did we reach out to the city of Bakersfield Economic Development Group, we reached out to other cities within Kern County. So in having, you know, Jason's support and the Economic Development Team partner with this, they helped us identify this location, they've helped us, you know, really understand the process to bring this site on as quick as possible. So we were able to purchase this location in, it was actually June of 2023. So we expect to have, like I stated earlier, expect to have full production December of 2024. So it's a quick turn, and you know, and that's really due to the support of Jason, his team, you know. Jennifer's been extremely helpful, Gary's been helpful, and you know, Phil. So really appreciate the group and the support that's been provided to us to really make this a positive relationship with the city of Bakersfield. So for me personally, I moved over here with my wife from Gilbert, Arizona, so we are now part of the community. We are excited to be here. We feel fortunate that we've been able to move to this beautiful location. So not only do we feel fortunate that we were able to build this plant here, I feel fortunate as, you know, as a citizen of Bakersfield to be part of this community. So again, much appreciation to the group and to all the support that we've been given. Not to say that we haven't had some challenges and some roadblocks, but overall, we feel like we've had a voice at the table, we feel like we've been heard, and when we've had needs, they've been quickly addressed. So thank you all and appreciate the support that we've had. So look forward to being a great business partner with the city of Bakersfield and appreciate, again, everybody supporting this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. You use the phrase, we feel fortunate to build a plant here and to move your family here. The city of Bakersfield and our residents feel fortunate to have you here. So welcome and thank you.
All right. I'm just going to run through this last couple of slides and then turn it over to City Manager Clegg. I did not pay Jeff or Troy to come and share that message. They, I did ask them to come and share their experience because I wanted you to hear, you know, their story. But exciting new developments coming to the city of Bakersfield. Where do we go from here? So you've heard some of the first phase of our improvements, some other phases, like our next phase of process improvements that we want to get into, is we know that we need more training with staff. You heard the cross-communication is something that we need to work on. So how do we get better at that? We need to bring them together and unify these groups. So customer service enhancement and customer service training is definitely on the list. We do have on record that Jeff said he would pay for a pre-application meeting, so it's been recorded, Jeff. I'm sorry, can't take that away. So we know that that, modest, I did qualify, he qualified that, so, but that's good. It's on record. So we know that that pre-application effort can be an enhancement. I think along with that, and this is a message that I always carry with me, is do better, be better today. And that's one of the things that is the mantra of this group. Anyone who's involved in this effort, you can only get better by doing it consistently, and then you become better, you be better, and then don't wait for tomorrow to get better. We're going to start today. So these enhancements will continue to go on. So these enhancements will continue to go on. A little bit on some technology advancements that Director Burns and I have been talking about is we're going to get through this next phase, but there's future phases of technology upgrades that we can do. Clarity, the company that we're currently working with, has shown us an upgrade where it's an AI application that you answer 20 questions through your, the AI model that they have, and then that generates the application instantly, which is, would be incredible for our development community to be able to have something that easy that they can, you know, hire staff to get those applications processed. City Manager Clegg talked about our permits and having those set timeframes. We're going to focus on that in this next round of what are those other permits, whether it's grading permits or the like. There are several permits in our queue that can be over the counter as well and we need to look at that of what can be, you know, very quick permits that we can process. Director Burns and I have talked about our ADUs. We've seen great progress in these last few years of ADUs and those can easily be over-the-counter permits with a basic set of plans that's pre-approved and pre-approved vendors as City Manager Clegg has talked about. And then finally, Jeff talked about it and we've been talking about this for quite some time, but we do want a one-stop shop. We feel that is the right direction to go in, having our fire, we have fire plan checkers and fire inspectors. We've got those at Public Works that touch land development. Having that all under one roof at Development Services, there is some space and we're going to make more space over there in the coming weeks. But it just makes sense. No business is successful if they say, if I'm a restaurant and I say, "I want you to get your appetizer over there down the street and then get your entree at this other place and then come back here and you can get your dessert." No business would be successful in doing that. So we want to operate like a business and have one place where people can get everything that they need and under one leadership so that there's, there's no excuses at that point. There's accountability built in. So with that, I will turn the remainder of the presentation.
Now that there's a lot more in the presentation, but just wanted to round out with this slide a reflection that, you know, we have established a set of values and principles of city staff of how we're going to function and wanted to just reflect that this is consistent, you know, this process of doing better and how we collaborate with our business partners, how we collaborate with one another, that we want to be accountable, that we want to have clarity and meet those expectations. We want to be innovative and creative and resourceful in coming up with solutions that are different and we're, you know, we want to, what I always say is, you know, I'll entertain any idea at least once. Let's talk about it. Let's dream big and think big here. And, you know, we aim to be not just better, but we aim to try things that if together we say we think it's really going to work, nobody else has done it, let's give it a shot. Let's give it a try. We're not going to do that lightly, but we're willing to do things that are different, that make sense. And of course strive for a standard of excellence, which again is customer service and it is solutions oriented and it's getting to yes, while we're being good stewards of the public trust, public dollars, and again, public safety. We see this as a, again, a council number one priority, something that's going to lead to more prosperity in our community and really be a differentiator amongst other competitors that is really important to us and then just weave throughout with the types of values we're trying to instill amongst our employees. And it's a great project to be able to remind and point to that for folks as we work forward with our partners. Again, we've already taken some steps. Of course, there are council approvals that will come along the way in certain areas, but where we are finding wins that come at the administrative level, we're just doing it. We're moving, but we'll come back and inform council of those things. But there will probably be some steps where, you know, we'll want, you know, council to acknowledge or ratify some of our timeline guarantees. We're going to come back with some resource considerations to council, but this will be an iterative process, but we're, you know, we have our sleeves rolled up and we're working hard in the space and already making moves, but there's many more moves to make. With that, we're happy to have some questions and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg, Mr. Helen and staff. And now we'll go to the public for comment. Mr. Turnipseed.
Madam Mayor, member of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. It pays to see the program first before you talk. Obviously, all this is very, very important to the future of the community. We looked at economic development and changing world eight years ago when oil started to have its problems and I didn't know much about economic development. So I recruited Barry Hibbert to our board for the last eight years. We've been working together and I think it's been three or four years that we've been pounding the idea that we have to get the permitting process fixed because Barry tells lots of stories of examples. In the new world of economic development, the first guy in, if he's happy and says, "I had a great experience," the next guy's coming and the third guy's coming. But if he goes, "Ah, it was okay," they're not going to come and invest 25, 30, 40, 50 million dollars. And I think that is where the real key and where this is all going is nothing is more important than your economic development, the B3K being successful and Bakersfield and Kern County reestablishing its economy post-oil decline and ag decline because of water issues and other things. And you're on the right step. And an article last week in the LA Times stated, they did a survey, one-third of the people in LA in Orange County that replied to the survey or were surveyed said, "We're moving because we can no longer afford to live in Orange County. We're inexpensive, especially with telecommuting. If we're not taking every advantage of that," and it's not just the people that live there, it's the small businesses that are trying to survive in that environment. If we don't, the opportunity's here, we better take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Dave Demahowski.
And Madam Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Arias entered at 4:23. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Dave Demahowski with the Home Builders Association of Kern County. Just wanted to thank your staff for a great overview. We're very interested in the organizational changes that may be required to implement the one-stop permitting process, but our Board of Directors had a discussion about your efforts to improve the permit streamlining of the city and we're strongly supportive of your efforts here. We do appreciate it. I think it's all about creating a culture of helpfulness within the city. I think that's essentially what your staff has said and we look forward to partnering with you on that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, please.
Blaine Neptune.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to thank and reiterate what Jeff said and the city staff for their efforts with this initiative and thank Gary in the City Manager's Office for including the development community. I support everything I've heard. I think it's great. Streamlining is very important. Currently, it takes about six to nine months to process a tentative map and nine to 12 months to get improvement plans approved. I currently have, my office currently has 35 subdivisions in design and in development, which comprises about 5,000 residential lots. The number one question I get from developers and clients is, you know, "How long until I get this approved? How long before I get comments back?" And I can just answer what it takes me to do the design, but not how long you get it back. So knocking off a month on a tentative map, knocking off a month or two on improvement plans will greatly help this process. I support a one-stop shop and I think it'll be great. I will say one thing, this is all on the front end and it's fantastic, but one thing the city should look at too is on the back end. Right now, there's a lot of issues that home builders are having getting occupancy permits based on a notice of completion for a subdivision. I think we need to look at doing partial occupancies, you know, let people move in before they, you know, sidewalk is cracked or fixed or minor little issues. But all in all, I appreciate the city's effort. It's been a fantastic opportunity to work with the staff on this and I look forward to bringing on those 5,000 lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neptune. Madam Clerk, are there any other public speakers?
Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Thank you very much. And to all of you developers, thank you so much. Government does not generate economic development primarily. It's all of you out there and we really appreciate your input. Mr. Turnipseed, you mentioned Mr. Barry Hibbert and we've heard many times from him about our inability as a city to control everything, but the one thing that we can control is that permitting process. So thank you all for your input, staff. Thank you so much. And now we'll go to the council for comment. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, thank you, staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you for hearing the cries of the city council, certainly our developer community and getting right on this. And certainly this is a top priority for the city council and we've said it over and over and over and over and over again. And it's very exciting to see a lot of this progress moving forward. So my hat's off to all of the key staff who have been part of this effort for so long. I just want to echo some comments. I love the timeline guarantees. That was a referral that I had made a while back. I love to see us establishing guarantees for our developer community so that they can have a sense of what it would take, what time it would take. That, to me, is transparency. I love the idea of these feedback loops, the fact that through this process, we will continue to hear from the developer community, all of our applicants, so that we can continue to improve our process, not just one time, but continue it continuously in perpetuity. And I love the idea of the central development office, that one-stop shop. It's something we have discussed several times, time and time again. Can't wait to get that shop up and running. I know that there are some challenges, but I'm certain that with the staff that we have at City Hall, that we can push through those challenges and we can get that one-stop shop up and running sooner than later. And we'll all be there to celebrate. Hopefully Mayor Go will cut a ceremonial ribbon of this one-stop shop.
We were, we're going to do that.
Just a couple of comments. One is I wrote, and Jeff, I love the fact that you said, "Time is money." Because I wrote, that was my first comment right here. And this is, every time this topic comes up, I always mention, "Time is money." And those folks that I represent in downtown and central Bakersfield, they communicate that very clearly. Time is money. And so as much as we continue to work and improve our processes, I think there's also an improvement in the culture within the city. You know, I love the fact that several folks have commented that they can call Paul, they can call Phil and we can work with them directly. That's wonderful and I hope that we can continue that. But my hope really is that anyone who has an issue can talk to anyone up and down the chain of command and get just as much help. And that customer service quality is exceptional up and down the system and throughout the organization. And for me, this is about getting to yes, really, really changing the culture from having folks within City Hall who are sort of the gatekeeper for certain, you know, code or compliance issues to really being a partner in development and really, really trying to change the narrative within the city so that folks feel like they're really a partner in development and that they can, they can really understand, first and foremost, start with understanding the needs and the goals of the applicant and they can treat them more like a customer as opposed to, as opposed to penalizing them for mistakes or missing information or whatnot. That's a different shift and I'm hoping that we can work towards that through training. Mr. Clegg, can you speak to some of that?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor and Council. I would acknowledge, we've actually done a couple of trainings already and so there's either good news and bad news in there. The good news is we're working on it. The bad news is there's still work to be done despite having done some of those trainings. But we, we know that, that culture is something that does take time and sometimes it's not even just, it's not necessarily a willingness or unwillingness. It's, you know, that's sort of sinking into, you know, almost the, you know, not just the mind, but the soul of the individuals to really just have that be their mindset all the time, ongoing. And also in some instances, providing, you know, more and more tools and examples to those individuals of what does success really look like. So a year ago, we held a customer service workshop that was internal to the city that we had some of our best experts on customer service in the city do a workshop with staff. We also brought out, as Gary had mentioned, we have a government innovation and improvement coach, Nick Kittle, who has worked with our team twice now. And one of those was specifically a customer service workshop that was targeted just to those individuals who were in the permit review process. But we've, we have Nick Kittle on retainer to bring back. We want to create some appropriate, we think, sort of time windows where we're going to, you know, provide these training, keep doing internal trainings, work on those issues and have them come back at, you know, whether that's a quarterly or a six-month type of frequency. But we're going to continue to provide those types of trainings that are really focused on solutions-oriented, customer-friendly, how do we, you know, get to yes? And I will say, it is important to make sure that yes is, again, it's within legal parameters, it's within, you know, safety codes, but find a way to get to the yes.
Absolutely. It has to be within all of those things. I just think the weight has been always towards being more punitive than it has been trying to be helpful and moving projects forward. And I want us to shift our weight towards trying to be helpful as much as possible. And really, I think that starts with having a clear understanding of what the goals are, what the real needs are of the applicant, because that may not be articulated in the application clearly or, you know, and so being able to first understand that and having our staff, our teams really empowered to be more proactive in identifying those needs and being helpful early on. I have another question and then I'll be done. It's related to the business success team. What authority does the team really have to give direction across departments in order to move applications forward?
That's a good question, Vice Mayor. I think as the context to that answer, you know, we do recognize that, for example, you know, the city engineer, you know, has some ultimate sign-off on certain things and also the chief building official has ultimate sign-off on certain things. And so I will acknowledge that we have not given the business success team necessarily, you know, formal authority to say, this is, you know, that's, you have to do it that way. But they are both facilitators and advocates for those project proponents. They have the authority to bring up issues to department heads. They have authority to bring up issues to myself where we, you know, maybe have some roadblocks or sticking points. And they also have the authority to obviously at other levels, bring that up to, you know, reviewers, supervisors to say, you know, help us understand what really is the issue here and this is what we're hearing from our folks and can we get some clarity? Can we get some timelines for those individuals? And so they're really an ombudsman and a facilitator more than having formal authority to make those decision calls.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Freeman.
And thank you, staff and industry representatives. I think, I think we have the right concepts. I think we have the right goals. I think we have the right spirit. I would say that more than six months to get a tentative map approved is not acceptable as a Bakersfield city. It might be in LA, but no one will regard us as business-friendly and want to come here. If they start hearing it takes longer. Record your map, improvement plans, nine months. It shouldn't take longer than that. I guess the only thing I would really encourage, because you may already be doing it, is that every project, every single application of the city needs to be reviewed at least every two weeks. We used to do staff meetings because we had a lot of projects. We used to do staff meetings, because we had a lot of projects all the way to go, but, and they might be many hours long, people have to be at the table who are responsible for every single step of that process. Did this get done this week or not, and why didn't it? And the next person, and the next, and the next. Every single department, every single project meticulously gone over, because, and with a name by the responsibility. If there isn't a name by, "Okay, you were supposed to get the grading permit reviewed this week." What happened? Well, pretty soon, you find out, "Well, the plans were dirty." Well, did you get back to the developer? I mean, you're supposed to solve problems, but if the individuals aren't held accountable at our end for solving the problems, not the builder, it's our job to make sure that project was done in six months or nine months. It's our responsibility as a city, or, as Mr. Turnipseed said, we don't get economic activity, we don't create jobs, we don't get taxes. We have to take the responsibility, and we have to have names on every single thing, and part of it is if you, if we have meticulous reviews, you got to get into the nitty-gritty. But the boss has to do that, or if we're so big, he's got assistant bosses, but everything has to be reviewed constantly, or those steps don't get taken, and it takes 12 months instead of six, because we didn't solve the problem right up. You find out real quick if it isn't happening. So I just say, the process has to, it may sound old-fashioned, as you go over everything with every people constantly, and there's goals and the names by everything, but that's the way things get done. It is the old-fashioned way. So I would encourage you that it's management that gets it done. If the system doesn't manage itself, it's individuals being responsible for steps, and so we solve the problem and we see the bottleneck. And someone, and that includes the fire department sitting at the table, and the police department sitting at the table, they're all sitting in the same room every two weeks. Why didn't you get the plans back from the fire department? Why didn't they get it done? Somebody's names on that, and heads roll when it doesn't get done. It's a serious process. Those aren't fun meetings. We didn't used to have happy meetings. They'd go many hours, and some people, you know, got put on the spot when things didn't get done. But you have to have somebody responsible for their stage, that it has to get done within the time assigned, or the, or those 15 steps never get done, so it doesn't get done in six months. So I'd encourage you to, if you're doing it, keep doing it. If you're not, look into it, because it's personal management in the end that makes all this stuff happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Well, good afternoon, gentlemen. First of all, I want to thank all you developers and builders to come and to speak to us and be part of the process, because there's no way we can make corrections if we don't know what to correct, and you all have been a vital part of that. When I first came on the council three years, three and a half years ago, the permitting process was something that was bugging me, and I had meetings with development, with small builders. I speak to you today not as a city councilwoman, but as a small business owner who built homes and had a very successful remodeling company here in Bakersfield for 41 years. And so I have a little bit more experience, but not as a developer. So today, what I heard was the development process is, you know, number one. We've got to get new development in to be able to grow our city, and I appreciate Troy, the, what you, the investment your company has made in Bakersfield with over 500 people going to be hired in your company, I mean, or more. That's amazing, so thank you for coming and sharing. But I think I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the small builder in Bakersfield, the remodeler, the ones that's doing the one-off, the ones that are replacing air conditioning units and doing remodeling kitchen and bath like we did at Dreammaker Bath and Kitchen. Those are the builders, contractors that I'm speaking on behalf of today, because I believe that our department, building department, needs to be well-balanced, that no matter if you're a small builder like we were, or a remodeler, or you're a large developer, we're all part of this city, we're all making a difference, and whether we're holding up 5,000 homes, or a woman that, excuse me, has been dreamed of her new kitchen for 25 years, and now we're holding that up because, you know, we can't get it done. It's important that we're a well-balanced building department. So I want to, excuse me, I want to commend the culture that you all are working on, Mr. Burns, Mr. Clegg, that you're really building this company culture. We had a written code of values in our business, and superior customer service was at the top of the list, and we've got to provide superior customer service. But below that was that we've got to reearn our positions every day in every way. And just because XYZ developers had a great relationship and a great experience doesn't mean that ABC will, unless we understand every time a new developer, a new contractor, whether small or large, steps up to that desk or puts that application in online, that they're important, too. And building that company culture where accountability, as my colleague, Councilmember Freeman, has spoke of, that's extremely important. So that's re-earning our position every day in every way, and it's kind of an easy thing to think about. I want to remind you that at one time, a small contractor could go and get a permit right at the desk, over-the-counter service. I want to remind you, because Mr. Burns and I have had meetings with some of these gentlemen that don't have a staff, you know, we, I did, I had an office manager that could manage some of this, but a lot of these builders, they don't have a staff. They're contractors. They know how to use a hammer, they're electricians, they're plumbers, they don't know, they don't know technology. They don't know how to get on the internet and start working through the process. So I would encourage the building department that you keep those people in mind, that you are able to work with those that don't have staff to be able to support their effort, because again, time is money, and they need to be able to get right on, on those projects. So I am just excited that you all have taken this so seriously, that what I've seen today, I'm thrilled with. It sounds to me like the developers out in the audience are thrilled with it, and we are just going to keep getting better. Like Mr. Helen said, we're just going to keep getting better day by day, building on what we're doing, and I'm amazed at how much progress we have made as a city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. I, like Councilmember Freeman, was on the other side for 30-plus years as an engineer and developer and builder, and Mr. Turnipseed mentioned, you know, three or four years he's been talking about it. Well, I've been talking about it for 30 years, and 12 years I've been on the council. Lot of good direction, I guess, specifically the one-stop-shop, everybody says, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," and we've talked about that for a few years now, and we got to get past "yeah, yeah, yeah" and actually make it happen. The tentative map timing, I will say, when I first started processing tentative maps in the city of Bakersfield, they had a calendar. If you got to the planning department before 5:00, you turned in, took your check, you'd get a date, 45 to 60 days, you'd go to planning commission. And I know we're a lot bigger now and slower, but again, I agree, six to nine months for a tentative map, you know, three to four months is very doable. We're just, we're continuing development, the sewer there, the water there, the streets are there, and we, the conditions are the same every time. It doesn't make sense that it takes six months to get a tentative map. And I would agree on the other side also, that Blaine Neptune mentioned, on the notice of completion. When I developed in the county for years, they would give you notice of completion forever while you were working out the punch list, and, you know, you've got, the city has the letter of credit, there's no financial risk for the city, and as long as you, you know, there's no health and safety issues, you know, the street's paved, the drainage is in, and you're working on punch items, then you should be able to move people in. So the culture of helpfulness, the culture of how we make it happen, I know it takes time, but anxious to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you, and thank you again to all of you, staff. Thank you also. We stand adjourned at 4:50, and we'll reconvene, we'll start the next meeting at 5:15.